Are starting the November one study session. It is now eleven seventeen. I'm Barb Nosworthy and the mayor. And I'm going to have, starting at my left, go around and introduce yourselves so that people recognize your voice.
Hi, I'm Melissa Yusef, Mayor Proton.
Olivier Vosman, City Council.
As a managerial city manager.
Erin Hader, Assistant City Manager.
Kim Baxter, City Councilor.
Thank you. And I will do as I do at the start of study sessions and city councils. We're going to make a land acknowledgement. This is my personal statement. It does not reflect a statement from council. Excuse me? Thank you. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the Nuchu, Janay, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and numerous other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the newest government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective without recognition of those who came before us and who, to this day, continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging my legacy, this legacy. All right. So today's agenda, we will have future new business. And we all made a commitment to try to keep this moving because we needed a fair amount of time for the projects. Budget reconciliation, grant new project discussion, and the sales tax, which we've allowed at least one hour. I had asked in advance for anyone to send if they had any new business topics as of Sunday. I think no one had sent in the end. Does anyone have a new business topic? I have two. I sent one in, which was that we met with the old pension hire and the old pension lease hire fund, old hire police pension fund, and the old fire pension fund. And there'll be recommendations for increases in other monthly payment that needs to come to council for a vote and a resolution. That resolution will need to be prepared at the same time. What we discussed was bringing it to council on December sixth. I believe that's Tuesday. And not having it be on the consent agenda because I believe a representative from each board would like to have three minutes or so to speak. And I also think it's good for us to know who our pensioners are. So is there any disagreement or support for having that on the December sixth agenda? What's for me? Great. And I know it's in one of the budgets for reconciliation. I don't know if the other one has been added in. And we are also waiting some confirmation from Cynthia. If we could bring all that together, but it should be done timely. Good. That takes care of that. The other thing is on tonight's agenda, we have a request to move the order around to have the, to have Marty present last and Devin King first on that section. So, and it's about some issues that I think many people can relate to, childcare issues this evening. Does it? Yeah. So it's the end of the schedule would be at the very end. Instead of Devin going last in that section, can he go first? And I'll raise it again.
What numbers are you talking about?
I'm talking about numbers thirteen point one and thirteen point three. And I will raise it at the beginning of the meeting as well, but I think I wanted you to have this time to think about it and so that Devin and Marty were aware. Is there support? Would there be support for moving that around? Thank you. Great. Does anybody have any items for new business?
Yeah, I wanted to bring forward the request by the CRC for the increase in budget. They requested six point nine thousand and they had a previous budget, I think, four point five thousand. Then it's a three point five, so one of the email dated to nine twelve. It's a very small amount, but city manager indicated it needs to go to council, so.
Can we talk about, as the liaison, what's it for and do you support it?
It was an email sent to all.
Do I actually have to take a vote in order to approve it? So are you asking me to have it be put on an agenda?
Right.
Yeah, that's my ticket.
First of all, is this an amount we need to spend at council time? Well, and second, yeah, if it is, then my core request is to have it in a future agenda, I mean, before the budget gets built. The difference is either two point four or two point four thousand dollars.
You guys still? You don't want to talk about it? Yeah. Well, now's not, this is.
So yeah, I recognize that. So then you need to make decisions in a certain.
Well, so do you. Right. I'll wait and hear what you have to say. Because I wanted to ask questions about it. I won't.
No, go ahead.
No, that's okay. I'll wait until we can have an agenda item or not.
I think that if we, if this goes, if we're discussing it, I think there's some other issues that could be discussed as part of it and not just solely to on the CRC. It is the only one with a budget. I think that for me, I'd be interested in where we're at with the different advisory boards turning in their signed statements about support for the advisory, about, you know, binding by the advisory board code of conduct. That's when they agree to serve. That's a statement that they agree to. So I'm not certain where we're at with all of that collection. So if we're going to have an advisory board discussion, I could see building it into a larger one.
Well, anything that has to do with the budget is something we have to vote on. So I would be happy to have the conversation you want to have also, whether that be a study session or whatever, but the budget needs to be voted on. So if that has to be. Future conversation?
Yeah. Probably put it on the fifteenth council agenda item because I would imagine it would need action.
Okay.
So would that include also a discussion of code of conduct?
If that's what, if they give us fellow councillors, they're good with that one as well.
Well, I think we do need to resolve that, the question, because in our advisory board manuals, the advisory board members need to sign the code of conduct and code of ethics. And if they don't sign it, then what happens? So I agree, we need to have that be part of the conversation or a conversation.
And just to clarify the question on the signing of that form, the CRC has requested on multiple occasions to have some quite, some more explanation on that form and some questions that they wanted to ask an attorney. And I think that's also still an outstanding topic.
So they haven't asked an attorney yet? Is that a question?
There's been going emails back and forth with the fires of the attorney, but no presentation or no opportunity for them to ask questions.
Melissa, you had some other items that you wanted to ask if there was going to be a meeting?
Well, ask in the meeting.
Oh, okay.
But we can, obviously, there's consent for a future agenda item. Just then.
Was there a consent for the code of conduct? That's still, there was for the CRC. I just want to make sure for the code of conduct, there was a.
As relates to the CRC.
And if there's anyone else that has not signed, any others? I mean, I don't know that is not signed. Because when you are sworn in, you swear into a poll. And I don't know if we do a full process for the advisory boards, but here is that they just get the paperwork and have to sign. The expectation that.
Okay. Sounds like a good, okay. Two items, general business.
Great. Thank you. All right. On that, we will go to the budget reconciliation. And Devin, you're coming up here. And do you want to? Okay. Yes.
So just a quick clarification. It does say reconciliation, but this isn't the reconciliation. This is the study session before where there's some of those outstanding questions and issues that we have that we're trying to get before we get to reconciliation, which is in two weeks. But just wanted to make sure that that part is clear with the process, that this is just a precursor to reconciliation, but not reconciliation.
But you probably are asking for some direction.
Yes.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Schmidt, budget strategically and officer. As I was saying, the purpose of this item is really to get direction and certification from council on items that came out of the budget retreat, as well as just some areas where staff has a couple of proposals. So I will, we'll start there. It did include a part of the November fifteenth reconciliation presentation in there in the event we are cruising along and we want to keep going. So just wanted to have that for efficiency. So today, we're going to be, I'll take you through the combined summary changes, which will be reflective in this November first presentation. Then we will look at the lodgers tax fund and some of those changes as it relates to the October eighteenth meeting where some budget amendments or allocations were brought forward. We proposed three different options for the road impact fees as it relates to the two thousand and five and the debt service and that sales tax. The two thousand and nineteen related to County Road two fifty, two fifty-one, self-insurance, some changes as it relates to benefit structure and items there, risk management, and some items as it relates to the sustainability of that fund and the additional transfers needed to sustain it. And then there was a powerhouse science center request that was included for discussion. The sewer fund as it relates to the loan changes and then the water funds, specifically the Lake Net Horse project. So starting off, we're looking at the combined twenty twenty-three proposed budget summary. The first piece there that you'll see, as it relates to this presentation, all the blue are reflective of any changes since the proposed budget. For this presentation, we're going to focus on the areas where we needed some additional direction from council. So looking at the lodger's tax, you can see that there is a reflect change in revenues and expenditures, and that results due to the forecasting and those twenty-two, twenty-three projections changing a bit. This also reflects in the items that were included on the October eighteen. So that's that change there. On the road impact fee funds, you'll see that staff has included one million dollars transfer into the debt service fund so that the loan proceeds could be paid down. And so those are the two changes as it relates to this presentation for today. On the.
Question. I'm pulling up the initial proposed budget, but the URA budget seems to have changed quite a bit, even though it's black one page up.
The expenditures. The expenditures. Because those we do have listed in blue, and you are correct, councillor Vosman, that that is a change. That was one that we were going to discuss in the November fifteenth meeting.
Well, it makes it difficult if you have changes here and it's not highlighted, even though I go through this and I, yeah, I see that difference. So this, what was the number? Hundred and seventy-eight thousand? Beginning, page seventy-four. Yeah. Went from hundred and seventy-eight to seven hundred and forty-eight.
In which piece are we talking about?
The initial twenty twenty-three city manager's proposed budget, page seven four, four and fifty-one.
I can look into that.
I think Scott Chine might have something to add if we will.
Yeah.
And there's more numbers that changed, so I.
In which, you're looking at the estimated beginning or?
Yeah, I mean, I've got through all this. Expenditures are here one million and on this one, it's three hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Right. So that would be that six hundred thousand that was going to be re-carried forward in twenty twenty-three for a specific project. So that is why that one changed.
It was appropriated and not spent, so it's going to be added in.
Moved over.
Yep.
Well, the reason I bring it up is this is just one example of something I observed by coincidence called my attention. And it's a significant change. So how do I?
We can highlight those to show the blue pieces there. And if I may too, on each areas where you are seeing the changes on the future slides, this is representative of all of the combined summaries. Each one of the fund summary pages shows the reconciliation column or the proposed and then the reconciliation column. And so I think that's certainly a helpful place to see those in a little bit greater details, but we can, in preparation for the fifteenth, we can update that.
Is there any more that we should be aware of that are black and should be blue?
Not self-insurance. As it relates to the estimated beginning could potentially be one. We were trying to focus on the expenditures and the revenues because the estimated beginning fund balance would have changed from having those twenty twenty-two estimates change. And that's is obviously part of the conversation, but not something that is part of the approval process today or the areas for direction, if that helps.
And how can it change between this document, which was provided in October, I guess, and a month later? Is, was there something that triggered the change that we didn't know in advance?
So if we're looking at, for example, the Drangar renewal partnership, that we can use that example, we worked with community development, identified that that project was not going to be completed this year. And so as part of the reconciliation process, we're bringing it forward for reappropriation.
So the budget would have been prepared in August and you might have thought it was going to be spent. So that's why you, you didn't have it in there. And now with more information, you had, that's why we have the process to get it as finely tuned as possible.
And then as it relates to the estimated beginning fund balances, we're constantly working to try and estimate so that we're able to prepare and provide counsel with the most up-to-date information. So that's where you would see changes there. And to Mayor Nosworthy's point, you know, we really start budget process in May and we request the information from the departments to be submitted by August first. From there, it then becomes a city manager's budget. And so at that point, we don't allow any changes. And so as things change or the environment changes, that's why we would bring it forward for reappropriation.
So the differences between August first and then when we, and then October, when we got the first budget, is fixed, no changes. And after October, the initial budget up until the reconciliation, we have more accurate estimates.
And in between August and when council has provided the proposed budget, the city manager will make proposed changes as fit. And so that's part of that process too. So it's kind of been always never changing evolving. Do it. Okay. So.
Too much information.
You don't want to look at it all at once. That's fair. Okay. So forward.
I had a question as you work your way down. So I have a question on the two thousand and nineteen sales tax.
Okay. Excellent. And I will be on that slide next. On this one, I just wanted to highlight for council that the self-insurance reflects a shift to per employee per month model. Staff would be proposing that this would take effect in twenty twenty-two so that we're able to mitigate some of those unknowns as it relates to the fund as well as set it into a better position for forecasting and so that we're able to mitigate some of those higher claims. Risk management reflects the cost of services. And so that's also providing a fund balance in there so that should the city incur a large claim, we're able to fund that. And sewer fund reflects the changes to expenditures, which we'll cover in future slides, but it's primarily around that sewer loan risk precision. And the water fund, the next one, that's the IP. And that will be related to, you'll see, there's no blue changes there. I believe council wanted to have further discussion as it relates to the Lake Net Horse project. So that's why you're not seeing any expenditure or revenue changes on that piece. On the two thousand and nineteen sales tax, you will see that the expenditures reflect the changes as it relates to pulling out two projects and increasing the County Road two fifty, two fifty-one up to the six point six million.
So my question, Devin, is if we, on the first one, you, we transferred in a thousand, a million dollars from, where was that transfer?
The road impact fee fund?
Yes. If we transferred a million from the road impact fee fund, why would we not list the twenty nineteen sales tax as a transfer of three point, whatever it is, five hundred from the county? So because it looks like we're getting more sales tax than we really are. And I know we also do this with the grants that come in for twenty fifteen, but I just was thinking that that might make it a little cleaner that it's.
It's shown as miscellaneous revenue.
Yeah.
It's not shown as sales tax.
It's, yeah, but this is coming in as revenue when people think of it that way.
That's the total. So if you look at the detail, it shows sales tax and all the other revenues, and then it shows miscellaneous revenue of three point three oh five thousand.
So.
That's where that comes in.
So my question though was, is it possible to footnote it? Try to say that it's, you know, because I know it's not the sales tax and we know that, but other people might not see that. So could you footnote on some of those cases where it is particularly a significant amount? It might be another grant in the twenty fifteen.
It's on this page right here. It shows you that.
All right. I'm just looking at it from a.
Well, that's just the summary. So this is the detail.
Yeah.
And it shows you that.
If it's too much work, I understand that it's possible to do it, but.
We can certainly footnote that as the county's contribution to that project.
I think it's important to show the county is putting, in many ways, possible, the county is putting money in. Thank you.
And then I'm here as well too. You'll see that sales tax bond debt two thousand and seven fund and that's reflective of the contributions to payoff of the debt.
And we're going to be talking about that in detail.
Yes. Yep. Yep, absolutely. So lodger's tax, the biggest changes for lodger's tax as a result of the October eighteenth meeting where staff brought for several allocations in twenty twenty-two as well as several projects for twenty twenty-three considerations. On the variance side there, that is comparing proposed to the reconciled. So that's this column here. So you can see areas where there's changes. So this beginning piece, as we're looking at revenues, that is reflective of our current projections. So when we proposed the budget, we were projecting three point nine million total lodger's tax revenue. We're now thinking it's going to be closer to three point six. So you'll see the according changes as it reflects through. So that would affect sales tax or sorry, lodger's tax for transit. This would also affect all, every single bucket would then be reduced by that amount to the corresponding revenues. As it relates to projects, one of the items that was included in the proposed was the thirty thousand dollars for the drone show. This was reduced with the forecasting and projected changes, and that was due to the two hundred thousand that's still in consideration for special events. So instead of giving two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to special events, it's two hundred thousand. In addition, there is ten thousand dollars for the employee parking program and a hundred thousand dollars for the IO's own free transit initiative. And then again, down here, as we look at the lodger's tax admin fee as well as the marketing, those are all reflective of the newest projected numbers.
So is this one we're going to talk about in detail or?
Yeah, we could, I could pause on each one and we can talk about it in detail and get direction from council about what council would like to see in the final.
Well, I had a couple of questions. So these pages aren't numbered, so I don't know how to tell you which page it is. But in your, in your packet distribution, there's a one called original lodger's tax.
Yes.
And it says projected ending twenty twenty-three fund balance of five hundred and fifty-four thousand.
Yes.
But there's no revenues and no expenses. So why, what's going on here?
So that was from twenty twenty-one. That is the original two point, the original lodger's tax amount before it became a five point two five percent. So that is why you're not seeing any revenues or expenditures there. So that's the original lodger's tax amount of that five hundred thousand.
So what happens with this?
I think we would need to defer to Tony as it relates to, is this, does the new ballot language take over the uses for that five hundred or is it the original ballot language? So currently, it's just sitting in a fund balance.
So this is what was collected up until the point in time that the new lodger's tax took effect, July first or whatever.
Of twenty twenty-one, yes.
So that's been sitting there for a year and a half and we're not analyzing how to handle it?
We could certainly analyze what, what the process would be or if those dollars now become, if they come into the new lodger's tax or if that's part of the old ballot language.
Right. But so if it were part of the old ballot language, though, I mean, we need to figure this out.
Yes.
Because this money is just sitting there. It's five hundred thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
Okay. So is that?
Did you talk to Tony, the legal advisor, and get out exactly what the parameters of those are? So we are working on, we just need to get those.
So this beginning piece, as we're looking at revenues, that is reflective of our current projections. So when we proposed the budget, we were projecting 3.9 million total lodgers tax revenue. We're now thinking it's going to be closer to 3.6. So you'll see the according changes as it reflects through. So that would affect sale, sales tax, or sorry, lodgers tax for transit. This would also affect all, every single bucket would then be reduced by that amount to the corresponding revenues. As, as it relates to projects, one of the items that was included in the proposed was the $30,000 for the drone show. This was reduced with the forecasting and projected changes. And that was due to the 200,000 that's still in consideration for special events. So instead of giving 230,000 to special events, it's 200,000. In addition, there is $10,000 for the employee parking program and $100,000 for the IO's own free transit initiative. And then again, down here, as we look at the lodgers tax admin fee as well as the marketing, those are all reflective of the newest projected numbers.
So is this one we're going to talk about in detail or?
Yeah, we could, I could pause on each one and we can talk about it in detail and get direction from council about what council would like to see in the final.
Well, I had a couple of questions. So these pages aren't numbered, so I don't know how to tell you which page it is. But in your, in your packet distribution, there's a one called original lodgers tax.
Yes.
And it says projected ending 2023 fund balance of 554,000.
Yes.
But there's no revenues and no expenses. So why, what's going on here?
So that was from 2021. That is the original two point, the original lodgers tax amount before it became a 5.25%. So that is why you're not seeing any revenues or expenditures there. So that's the original lodgers tax amount of that 500,000.
So what happens with this?
Um, I think we would need to defer to Tony as, as it relates to, is this, does the new ballot language take over the uses for that 500 or is it the original ballot language? So currently it's just sitting in a fund balance.
So this is what was collected up until the point in time that the new lodgers tax took effect, July 1st.
Of 2021, yes.
So that's been sitting there for a year and a half and we're not analyzing how to handle it.
We could certainly analyze what, what the process would be or if those dollars now become, if they come into the new lodgers tax or if that's part of the old ballot language.
Right, but so if it were part of the old ballot language, though, I mean, we need to figure this out.
Yes.
Because this money is just sitting there, it's $500,000.
Absolutely.
Okay, so is that?
Do you talk to Tony, the legal advisor, and get out exactly what the parameters of those are? So we are working on, we just need to get those questions through. I know Tony's just starting, so it'll be a little bit of a tough question around the back, but we'll be working on to find out where that funding goes.
Okay, that would be wonderful to know what we do with that. Thank you.
Do you have other thoughts on? I have some as well. I don't know if others got an email or a phone call from a constituent, but she made a really interesting compelling case for the need for places to sit as you're waiting for the transit. You know, a minimum of a bench and ideally something covered when it's the rainy season. And, you know, could we not put some of this, particularly if we want to have tourists riding it more and, and all of us riding the transit more, making it conducive to shelter, shelter from the sun, the rain and a place to sit. And so I was thinking about, and not that I want to redo something. So I know we, we talked about four months of free transit, which I also received some comments on. But I was wondering if, if not in something like that, if it's something we could look at as part of the, either the allocation. Some of those other allocations that are proposed could be used out of other parts of the lodgers tax. You've got the create, you've got the culture fund, which could support some areas that are proposed in the 2023 usage. You've got, yeah. Got the, what was that? It was the art structure that was proposed to come out of that funding.
820,000 for the comment threads project.
Yes.
125,000 for comment threads.
Right.
And the intention or staff stop process as it relates to the bucket that is arts and culture was really around Tommy, who manages that program, had a lot of interest in those grants. And so the thought was if we were able to shift that to council determination, then more of those grants would be supported and as well as this comment threads project. So that was kind of the thought for staff on that particular item. But if, if council desires, we could certainly.
I am, my, my opinion is that such a small detail, I would prefer to have not a model or box where I can make recommendations or I can spend some money on the benches. I think we have quite a topic here, it's a lot more.
I agree with Council of Osmonds also. I don't feel like I have enough information on what transit stops need coverage and what don't have them. So I'd want to get that kind of detailed before I was to make any changes to budgeting.
I'd just like to, I was just wondering, represent this constituent who called in and say, you know, maybe it's something to think about and come back. I'm not going to pencil it out now, but I know Devin's, I know. Devin's not here as well as he.
Okay. Well, I would agree with you two about, because I, I thought transit was working on, or multimodal was working on at one point, what transit stops needed benches and cover and what already had that. So, yeah, I'd, I'd like to figure that one out too. I'm also wondering, there's an estimated end of 2023 fund balance of 2.3 million dollars in this fund. So I'm, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I thought that the money that we're collecting, we're allocating out to each of these areas and then we're and then we're using it. But the lodgers tax marketing has 695,000, but I'm seeing a 2.3 million dollar total fund balance. And I'm not certain where the rest of it's coming from.
Okay.
600,000. So there's 82 in the council determination and zero in the lodgers tax arts and culture. Is there something in the transportation? Maybe I didn't turn out that page, but.
No problem. So on this first page here, we are showing what is available or projected ending fund balance. So in the council determination, it would be 82,000. And lodgers tax arts and culture, that would be zero. Again, that was the impetus of trying to get those grants out. And lodgers tax marketing would be 695,705. And then in the transit, that's reflective of zero. Staff is transferring that entire amount. And then it's the 554 in the original lodgers tax as well.
Okay, so.
So it's the combination of those.
7.6 and 300,000, 3.6 and 500,000. I'm still not getting up to a total of 2.3.
And I would say that other pieces that relates to proposed on the lodgers tax marketing, I believe we brought that dollar amount down to what is it during though had asked for? So there could be additional dollars on that component piece there too. But we can show that summary piece as it relates to that 2.3. That would be helpful.
And can I ask one more clarifying question? So in the past, special events was handled out of the arts and culture?
Yes.
And, or was it handled out of, out of visit Durango's marketing? And then they did some special events. That's how I thought it came out of it. It came out of the marketing. It came out of marketing and then they were awarded. And then now it looks like it's all going into the 11% that the city is managing. And so I, I, that surprised me to see that.
It was out of arts and culture. When Dirk was still here, he did look at the ballot language and he finds that it should either come out of arts and culture bucket or it should come out of council determination. So that was the reason for that shift.
But the, and Rachel's here as well. They were doing, they were working with events that draw, drew in people to the community. So it was part of the marketing and some of it was helping sponsor the event, which drew in people and some of it was marketing dollars for that. So I don't understand why that would not qualify, have to go into arts for our 11%.
This is the community special events that the city has the general fund, parks and recreation function managed by Terry and Ellen.
But like Iron Horse, I believe is one of them.
Right.
And that draws in thousands of people to the community.
We could certainly ask Tony to relook at the ballot language on that and see if that is something that could potentially come out of marketing bucket. That was Dirk's opinion when he was here, that it should come out of the arts and culture or council determination.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Hi, Rachel, for your budget for 2023, are you allocating money to special events? Do you have a bucket that you're?
25% of our city during the lodgers tax, those.
Yes, exactly. That's a local event market, events, not.
Not sponsorship of them, understand?
No, 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 I meant like not benches.
I understand. My question is.
Thank you.
It seemed to be working when some of their budget was handling the local events. And then I just don't understand why all of a sudden it's now in the 11% to come out of there, other than.
Which local events are you talking about that are in the 11%?
Special event, at the special events, it's projected estimated expenditures for 2023.
200,000.
The 200,000.
Thank you.
And Rachel, approximately how much were you spending on those local marketing events? It was about 200,000.
And, and if I may, if I may, Mayor, that one is actually going directly to parks and recreation for their setup and the support that they do with their special events, cost center division and the general fund.
We've always had a percentage of the lodgers tax going to the parks and rec to set up and break down and organize and manage the logistics of things. It isn't for sponsoring specific events.
So it would be, Terry's here as well, he wants to add a.
He really supports our operations and special events and that all of the best sports of the special events. People, parks and recreation, 4th of July, those sorts of things. So that's what, that 200,000 dollars for it. The drone show to movies and for.
Did you get your question answered?
Not really, but thank you for asking a question. I just, I questioned using a limited pot of money that's council determination for something that has funding sources from other sources.
It doesn't, that's what we're trying to say.
No, you could use funding sources from the, the general fund. You could use funding sources from some of the other tax directed dollars, so.
But it's always come from the lodgers tax from before we redid this. And so I think that that's where the logic is there, is it's about those types of events. And it sounded like, despite the fact that we had talked about that in our meetings, according to Dirk, that according to ballot language, we had to be careful.
May I add something? Is it possible to clarify this between you? And because I have a lot of questions on the budget that I want to address. And you still have several pages to go through, I think.
And I, I actually have a question too. I wanted to follow up on what Council Baxter was talking about with the 2.5 funding balance. I never got to add my question.
2005?
I'm sorry, 2.3.
3.
3, yeah. Yeah, I just want to follow up on that just because I really want to understand that just because it doesn't seem like we want to have that high of an ending fund balance. And, and so I do, I would love to see that detail if we can, like you suggested of what it includes. It seems like, I mean, could you guys tell me why we would want to hold that? Why we would hold such a high fund balance in lodgers tax if it's meant to be spent on the designated purposes?
It's 1.0, it's 1.39230 in, in addition to what our balances are here, just so you know, it's over a million dollars that's not accounted for.
And because, and because that money was collected before the ballot was approved, would it have to be approved?
This is collected after the ballot. Well, more than half of it's collected after the ballots approved, 554 of it was before the ballot was approved.
So my question is, I just want to understand if it's 1.3 million over or if it's whatever it is, it doesn't seem like a bucket to hold extra money. I just want to understand that.
Sure, and part of that does have to do with that deferred revenue, which is the over collections amount. So in 2021, we collected 683,000 that councils aware of. And then in 2022, we're projecting about 355,000.
So that deferred revenue, such as what we're voting off for 2A.
That is money that would not be expendable because of the ballot language.
Okay.
And that's still included in the sudden fund balance?
Yes, correct.
That, that explains it. Thanks you, okay, thank you.
And then finally, is there a recommendation for like when, when we had COVID last time? Thank goodness we had some money in the bank so we could actually keep some things funded. So we don't have a recommendation for the minimum fund balance for lodgers tax? Bringing it all the way down to zero isn't probably prudent either.
I don't believe, I would have to refer to Cynthia about lodgers tax fund balance policy. There is not a fund balance policy specific to that one.
Well, that answers my question very much.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
That makes it much more understandable.
Yeah, it was very clear about that.
We didn't, we didn't include that in the fund balance projections by cost.
That makes sense though.
Money that the city can spend.
Of course, that's, we, we need to keep that there.
Yeah.
We'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next, Devin, thank you.
Okay, so there are, the next three slides are going to be looking at the 2005 quarter cent tax that relates to the payoff for the Florida Road and the library. This is what was included in the proposed budget. So this would be, if there were no changes. What staff did include in reconciliation based on the conversation of council at the retreat was looking at two options. So this first option here shows utilizing some of that 183,000 that's sitting in the fund balance for fund 32, which is where the debt payment comes out of. That was one consideration. And then what's included in reconciliation is actually this next slide here. And this would be transferring in all the road impact fee funds for the next three years. So there would be 1 million, which would utilize some of that fund balance that's in that road impact fee fund. And then projecting about 300,000 in '24, '25 and '26. The yellow pieces also do include that piece that is showing 183 that's sitting in the fund 32. I know Counselor Baxter had asked that process around this and Cynthia and Finance was working on getting areas where we could pay down the debt. So from a budgetary standpoint, the next item we're going to talk about today at the study session is the 2005 potential reauthorization relocation. So should council decide to reauthorize early, that would be one consideration that you would have this funding sitting in this fund balance of this fund for future uses if that were to be reauthorized early. But if Cynthia has any other items to add as it relates to the debt payoff, that would be. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks for the questions. This prompted me to do some research and do some digging in. But what I have in front of you is a summary of the two bond issues that, that we have been speaking of. So the 2016 was a refunding of the 2007 bonds. But it, it, as you can see here, it, it displays what's still outstanding and endless. What I'd really like to draw your attention to is under the row called purpose, excuse me, the pledged revenues. One thing that was a new piece of information for me is the, the 2016, which is the, the library debt. That is definitely pledged by way of the, the sales tax, the special sales tax. However, the Florida Road project bond issuance is actually pledged to our general fund to 2% sales tax. That is not necessarily tied to the, to the quarter cent. Now, as a matter of practice, what we've been doing is paying those debt service payments out of using the dedicated sales tax rather than the, the general fund. This 2% from the 2017, that's the general fund portion of the sales tax. So it's unrestricted in that respect, it's just general fund. Just wanted to point that out. And then we, we see the, the interest rates for each, each of those. And we looked at what would be the cost to pay those off today, you know, to, to defuse those early. And it would be approximately 10.3 million dollars for, for both of those. That is, just answering that question. As both of those bond issuances are structured today, there is not an opportunity to, to prepay and have any interest savings as a result. We could defuse them by opening up a trust and an escrow and depositing all of those funds into that. And then, but by doing that, then somebody else is making those payments, those bond payments. So we're not having to make them and it comes off of our books because it's not then legally our liability any longer. If we do that, yes, it eliminates the, the liability portion of that, but it also reduces our cash by, you know, the same amount. So that's definitely a consideration. It's not the best and highest use of 10 million dollars of our fund balance. That's, that's really the question. Another consideration is the interest rate that we would have to, to pay on those because we'd have to pay that basically upfront. We would structure our portfolio to make all those payments. But in today's current investment environment, we can do better earning, earning more investment, excuse me, more interest income on those, those funds that are invested if we held on to them rather than putting it into a trust. So currently we're earning about 3.3%. That's only going to improve as we further deploy our new investment program that we're, we're working on. So another consideration is if we did, did this, it would the, the $750,000 interest, which is the remaining interest over the remaining life of those bonds right now, equates to about $750,000. So by doing, if we were to refund them earlier, not refund them, but do this advance payment, that kind of indirectly converts that $750,000 into unrestricted funds because we would be depositing our, our unrestricted funds and not having use of those. And then using, paying that debt with, it would be the sale, dedicated sales tax, which is restricted. So we would be kind of swapping unrestricted funds for restricted funds, which is another important consideration in all of that. So bottom line, as it's, as it's structured today, there is no benefit to. So bottom line, as it's as it's structured today, there is no benefit to to prepay. If that was the desire to go down that road, we could open up conversation with the banks that have those those loans and see if they were willing to renegotiate something for us.
I think I'll make it quick. My my point of view is that we have ten million dollars and we can make more interest. Return all that versus paying that, then there's zero point in discussing prepaying. Maybe that's a very quick answer.
So if there's no benefit to prepaying it, I I agree, there's no reason to do that. However, the twenty seven and twenty eight payments that are due, that the two thousand five sales tax will have ended at that point anyway, but there could be money sitting in the account to pay those off, right?
Sitting in which account?
Well, so you're showing the standard loan payoff at the end of twenty twenty six, you're showing three point one million dollars and then two payments, one in twenty twenty seven and one in twenty twenty eight. Bring the fund balance down to six hundred forty seven thousand. So that money, you were just talking about where would we put that money? Because we're accumulating it before the end of twenty twenty six to pay off twenty twenty seven and twenty twenty eight.
So so what I believe that schedule is is portraying is if we just by ourselves decided to put more aside in our own funds and accumulate those funds in the debt service payment fund, then then we could pay it off early, but that's just.
No, 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 I'm not talking about paying it off early.
Well, accumulating the funds in order to have it available to pay it.
So that wouldn't be, that would be sitting in the the two thousand seven debt payment fund. We'd move it into there so that we could pay it.
That's what if if that was the decision, that's exactly where I would recommend doing it. It it really compartmentalizes those dollars for those payments. That would be the.
And then it would start us out with the balance in two thousand five, sales tax of six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. Yeah. So that the question then becomes, is that legal? To just keep that or what or what happens with that six hundred forty seven thousand? If we re-up to two thousand five, do we have to put something in the ballot language about keeping any excess funding? Paying off these commitments? I it's just a question.
I if the source of those funds came from the two thousand five monies, then it would still need to be spent in accordance with whatever the the ballot ballot language was for that.
Right. But if the if the need didn't exist anymore, then we'd have to figure out, we'd have to look at the ballot as to what do we do with that.
Yes. So we would want to transfer it back to someplace where it could be spent. You know, in one of the capital projects.
Well, in alignment with the ballot.
Yes, yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Because those two, yeah, okay. All right.
So do you recommend transferring money into a debt fund so that if we have that money available when we've saved for it, when the date arrives?
Mike, before I answer that, I would ask, what is what what is your vision? What is your intent in in doing that? If if it's to it depends on what the intent is, but that would be a very good place to to house it while we're waiting for those debt service payment dates to come along. By that, by doing that, we would be able to to invest it and realize greater investment earnings. So that would be a really good thing. And it what it would do is remove it from the fund balance of whatever other programmatic funds there are. To so it would reduce what was available there. So just so we understand what the.
Well, that would make sure that we could make meet our commitment to paying off the Florida road bonds or whatever it is we're paying off there, the Florida road ones. Without having to suddenly go, oh, we need funds from the general fund or something like that. It would be there. It would be earning interest. And we would be able to pay it off. Plus, it would make the re-up of the two thousand twenty five or two thousand five sales tax measure cleaner because we wouldn't have to account for that in the in the re-up.
Right, right. For all of those reasons, that would be a very.
And if there were some catastrophic damage to a road and we needed it, it's not a permanent transfer to this. It's a holding place.
Well, this doesn't include moving in the the million dollars out of the road impact fee. That so that's that's really key for me because why would we move a million dollars of road impact fee and if we already have, if we have a balance sitting in there? So that then the road impact fee money can be available for whatever it's necessary for. Yeah. Without that transfer, we're fine.
So then if you go back to this first page, we may be looking at not transferring that money, that million. The page that says we pay off the road impact fee.
Right, because there's no reason.
So we'd be looking at not transferring that, keeping that money in the fund, recognizing we have a large balance and if could a portion of it be used for two fifty two traffic calming on two fifty two fifty one for the road impact fees?
Yeah.
So the language on that, the road impact fee says that it's related to specific road projects. I keep, I'm sorry, Tony, to keep hunting, but we're going to have to have a conversation about what those road impact fee funds can be used for. They are use it or lose it, kind of a fee. But I think that would be something that we could have a conversation about and see where those funds could be best utilized at this time. Keep it as proposed. Is that the direction I hear from council?
So could I ask council, does it, and I'll go around, does it make sense to one, keep these where they are, the road impact fees? And then in the meantime, find out specific examples of how those funds could be used vis a vis the traffic calming on thirty seconds, two fifty two fifty one. Any other road efforts? Bridges that might need repairing? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think if we don't need the million to transfer in there to make the payments, we shouldn't do that and we should do what you're talking about.
So in the new year, if you guys have had a chance, you could come back in it. At one of those update reports saying, here's what we've learned and here's what we've used. Because we talked about doing enhancements to the to the two fifty two fifty one over to beyond. And so this might be an option for covering some of those enhancements.
Or others.
Or others. Exactly. No, I just would like to know what you call it. There's support among council for that?
Perfect. And then the idea of putting the dollars into the two thousand five bond payment, two thousand seven bond payment fund as we accumulate them so that we can gain interest on them and then pay off the Florida bond in twenty seven and twenty eight. Does that work for everybody?
The only change that council would see in her contribution is instead of it just being that annual amount, we would end up taking as much as needed so that it's sitting in that fund. So that would be the only change.
Thank you. Thank you very much for getting that together. I know that was kind of and and like spur of the moment question when I was adding things up, so.
No worries, no worries.
I love Excel spreadsheets.
Maybe maybe we should take up the question that surely never straight.
Okay.
Well, because I think.
Your questions aren't any more important than anybody else's questions.
Which you can ask.
So can you?
I'm aware of timing.
Right.
And so I'm going to also say where where we've had to schedule once again. So we were concerned about this when we were talking about this last week. One of the things I will say is that we agreed in the last session that questions would be submitted in advance for these. So I want to remind folks that we would submit questions in advance.
And I did.
So we need to, Allison, I need to, wherever you. Is the Grandview project, before you come up, is that essential to be discussed today?
We have a consultant here to.
Okay.
For us that would be.
All right. No problem on that. We will, council support going to five o'clock.
Sure.
Then we'll take another fifteen minutes on this.
Let me make a couple of comments following the budget retreat. I outlined that some of my concerns and I'm on a statement for the public record. So first of all, we're in good financial condition. With the twenty twenty three budget showing a beginning fund balance of about eighty million. I had mentioned that I would prefer to have a simplified and streamlined budget, more in line with the audited financial report. My charter or the fund balances including the reconciliation of that. I think I mentioned the that I would prefer to see a reduction in the complexity with less funds and internal transfers, which will not only make it more transparent and easier to comply with the regulations, as well as charter ordinance policies.
If I may, will you be raising questions or just making statements? Because this is for questions. So I'd like to hear the question in a spirit of curiosity.
I want to tell my my comments and then I'll ask the question because these are comments I've made before.
Well, that made the comments before.
You made them before.
But they are not addressed. So maybe my question, actually.
So what are your questions?
Well, there's a reason why things don't get addressed sometimes. And we all have questions that don't get addressed or recommendations that don't get addressed. And what now we're doing is we're talking about something very specific here.
To the reconciliation process, not a revision. I'd like you to ask your questions. I'd like to hear what you've shared with council.
I'm a councillor that reviews the budget and I have concerns and questions and I want to bring them up in a public setting.
Then bring up your questions, please, not.
We can talk five more minutes like this, but I I would like to make these comments and I I will make these comments. You can cut me off as much as you want, but there's there's questions in there and I can formulate them as questions. I will do that if that's what makes you better.
You will recall that when we all met as a council, we agreed to work in a spirit of curiosity, asking questions and not having.
Okay. Well, I'll ask I'll ask the question. So I mentioned that I would like to have reduced complexity with less funds and internal transfers.
That's not a question.
Can I finish, please?
No.
I'm reading. This is, you don't even know what I'm saying and you say it's not a question. What is this verbatim?
It's your comment.
No, I I am starting a sentence and I'm going to end it with a question.
Go ahead, ask the question.
So I'll rephrase this again. I I've mentioned in the budget retreat, the opportunity to reduce complexity with less funds and internal transfer to make sure you comply with the regulations, specifically enterprise funds, as well as charter ordinance policies, which relates to the sure fund and the associated technology and building fund to reduce potential fraud embarrassment and make it simpler and more streamlined. And that seems not to be changed. Is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a question out of curiosity. Oh, my God.
I'll I'll make it a little bit easier for for this discussion. And
I got it.
So that was the compliance topic for the sure fund, building fund, technology fund. Is there a way to ensure compliance with the enterprise fund transfers?
I'm sorry, but you didn't put these questions out before when you were requested to. I actually wrote questions. And I think that I should be allowed to ask my questions also.
We all agreed. We all agreed. You were not here, Olivia. You did not attend the session. We talked about how important it was going to be to get the answers, the questions to Daven so that she could go through this. This is sounding like a monologue and a repeat of positions you've stated before on the record. If you have specific questions specific to the material she has prepared for us.
The budget.
This material right here?
This material.
This page or the whole budget?
This presentation for today.
So what we're talking about right now is the reconciliation.
It's that we are trying to get through reconciliation, not.
So so my my questions relate to concerns I raised during the budget retreat. They do not seem to be addressed or a lot of them or clarified.
That's because council didn't agree with you, didn't agree on those changes. No, because you're not following the spirit of those.
I'm going to step in.
Because we're frustrating staff.
We are frustrating staff. Councillor Bosmans, you are welcome for the record to write whatever you want and send it to all of council. Because we have heard this over and over again. And so this is not about trying to decide, does it make sense to have this money here or here? This is your philosophical view, which we have heard. And so if you have a specific question, recognizing that you did not send in any questions and we were all agreed to, then please ask it. If you do not have a specific question out of curiosity that and and are starting with a monologue, please refrain and respect your colleagues' time.
And if I may add, the philosophy that you want changed, council did not agree to change. We specifically said that. We gave direction to staff that we liked the way it was set up and presented now. So council gave that direction.
Now.
But yes, so now you're supposed to move forward and let that go.
That's part of the code.
That's part of the code.
So I'd like to ask if anyone else, Melissa, do you have some questions?
I do not have questions. I would just want to add to Olivia, though, to let you know, though, that at the time when we approved the budget at the city council meeting is when you would be able to share your comments, like you're talking about now. And we all can, you know, some of us might be thanking staff for their hard work and efforts. You might suggest something else. That's your choice. That's an elected official. But that's when you would do it now, right now.
Mayor, put on your seat. Do you have a belief that I will be able to finish my comments during that meeting?
I I believe that you should.
When we when we make a motion and a second and then there's discussion, you can give your philosophical bent on it.
Please stop.
Oh, it is. It's a philosophy about how.
Point of order.
Point of order. Point of order. And let me, let me say.
It's okay. I will do it during the.
Yeah. And let me also say that that out of respect for our colleagues, you don't get to stand up and and give them a dialogue of thirty minutes or so. This is everything is wrong. It has to be, you know, on topic and respectful and not monopolizing the time. So let us go back to questions. Councillor Baxter, I believe you had some more questions.
Thank you for asking about questions.
Yes.
Well, I wanted to talk about the powerhouse conversation because there were a couple of things that they had requested and staff one hadn't put the hundred and fifty thousand dollar in the budget, which is fine because we need to talk about it. But there I didn't think that all of these things that they were requesting were the responsibility of a landlord, which is what we are. And then they also received grants for funding for other projects that they work on that seemed to be, to me, to be well, some of the things in their hundred and fifty thousand dollar request maybe would be better as a request to either the character district grants or the lodgers tax arts and culture funding. And so that was why I asked what they had received in both of those areas. So the HVAC repair for eighteen thousand dollars, that to me seems like a landlord kind of responsibility. The brick facade, I also believe is a landlord responsibility. The event venue improvements, I don't think that may be a landlord responsibility because those are their events, their venue, they're organizing it. And they have also gotten thirty five thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for events as well as fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars for the Plaza Shade Sale Project and refreshing the plaza. So they've received money from the city already to work on that kind of thing. So I'm not certain. And those were both through the district grants and the culture funding. So I'm just not certain that that's a landlord responsibility. Smokestack and signage, they didn't break out the difference between the two. I think the smokestack, given that it's part of the structure, probably would be landlord's responsibility, whereas the signage wouldn't be because that would be whatever business occupies it is probably their responsibility. And site planning, I don't think that that's a landlord's responsibility to do site planning. Now, maybe that falls under the arts and culture funding or the character district grant or something like that, but I think that they're mixing together in this request, things that are landlord and are not landlord responsibilities. So.
What is your question?
My question is, do you think any of those things should fall inside or outside of the landlord responsibility of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar request? So do you do, is there any agreement, discussion?
I I think it merits what's, where does the the persons who's benefiting from the city is making the land available or the space available? What's the responsibility to fund and what is, what what might the city have a responsibility to cover?
Well, I appreciate you breaking it up in that way. And there was a lot of, you know, back and forth like this morning. And I haven't seen all the answers to it, to see those funding for the grants answers. And I could try to read it right now, but.
It's just it's two things. It's pretty simplified. But it's a concept and I'm just wondering if we need to have a discussion about this concept before it just gets added into the budget.
Right.
Because it might set precedent also for other situations.
Right. Because I do like to see the support for them and I do. Right, because I do like to see the support for them and I do like to see the support for the building like you are suggesting. From the landlord perspective, I appreciate that. And I I just don't have time to dial down on. You know, some of the proposed enhancements and their event venue improvements, they maybe need to think through this, you know, they're looking through window shades to support. Window shades, greater control over lighting. I I don't know, some things I think need to be sorted through potentially. So maybe further discussion would be more.
That's what I was wondering too. Yeah, and we're going to be talking with them in February, January or February?
Somewhere in there.
And and it's, we could appropriate money then so we could, we could take this out of the budget for now and have that as a bigger conversation.
Could we do, should we, is that possible to do that or would it be preference or would your preference would be to? Try to get to a smaller number that include, that we know includes.
From a staff perspective, no preference on either way is is fine with us.
I would, I would put that, I would also add what other organizations would then be coming to the city for this kind of funding?
Sure.
Would it be the DAC or the landlord? Yeah, when we're the landlord or we have joint funding, would DAC be coming to us for funding for their building? Would MANA be coming to us? So that's my concern.
So it is a philosophy concept.
So I would, my support would be to remove it completely. Let's see what the NOSIA council supports this. Remove it completely, participate in the strategic plan, have them come back, but also to have staff give us recommendations for. What this might, what precedent we might be setting and where we might be getting additional requests. Is there support for that?
Is that, is that, yeah, yes.
I, it's, it's interesting because sometimes we try to allocate money even though we don't have a use, a specific project for it. And here we have an entity that everybody loves and I completely support the powerhouse. They come, the emails go through all these efforts and we're trying to pull it away from the budget. And we could also say we have a budget for the powerhouse of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we'll work out the details to have at least some money allocated to the powerhouse. Uh, for these or other or different uses. And so sometimes we do allocate money without specific budget. Here we have five projects. And maybe now all of them, some of them might be a little bit confusing, but here we try and pull it off. So it's just interesting to see the philosophy changes.
Actually, actually, it doesn't change because when we've been allocating without specific projects, that's within the city organization itself. This is for an entity outside the city organization that we contract with. So that is one reason why.
And my concern would be that, you know, access could come asking funding for funding for buildings. The plot, the humane society could be coming asking for this. DAC could be coming, MANA could be coming. So before we just make this decision, because we all like the powerhouse.
Yes.
I want to know what else is out there that we might be setting a precedent for and those organizations might be also having an expectation.
To be able to discriminate between the two things is really important.
I think you bring me up a good point though. The one thing that I I know is true is that, that, you know, the, the conversation that the. People that are running the powerhouse science center have said and those supporters who've. Hundreds of thousands of dollars have always said that based on previous discussions with city and so that. You know, if nothing's in writing, but we do have some of that history that we, that, that we would support in some way. So I'm in favor of doing some support at some time, however we get there, for building. I am in favor of that. I, you know, just, and and so if. If we've, if we can do that in February after a strategic planning session.
The meeting is January eleventh.
And that's at the.
That's with the powerhouse.
With the powerhouse at their, for, to go through their budget or their strategic plan. Then after that, we can have a discussion in February so long as they recognize that we're supportive of some of these potential costs.
Because we get their viewpoint, we get their vision and then we can work together on making that happen.
Then I would.
So are there questions related to any of the enterprise, any of the directed sales tax funds? I know we, we jumped over to the powerhouse, but were there any questions related? Just want to keep, make it certain we go through what Daven has highlighted. So can you go back to the? Twenty fifteen, is that in there?
That's, are you missing anything that you need direction on?
No, twenty nineteen, you had changes, so I just wanted to make certain we were.
Twenty nineteen is reflective of the changes where we add the six point six million in, we increase the contribution. We also reduce the amount for contribution from the sidewalk owners to do a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split.
That's new, thank you.
In the self insurance fund, this really shifts to that per employee per month. I think this is important to highlight as it relates to self insurance because this also does reflect the plan design changes. That staff is proposing. So really what this is doing is that currently per month is offering the opportunity for there to be a stable revenues that will sustain that fund balance. But this does offer the ability to increase deductibles and out of pox, out of pocket maximum to align with the plan design changes. And be a market or a south west public sector in that area. In addition, it is looking at increasing that PPO rate, should employees choose that? As well as offering that high deductible plan with health savings account with an employer contribution. So this was one of the items that I think council at staff or has been asking staff to really look at. And I think HR and budget planning has had a good partnership working through that. So this is reflective of those changes. And council can see in twenty twenty-two, there is an estimate there where staff will have to try and take those entire budgetary numbers from. Insurance in order to mitigate twenty twenty-two claims. In twenty twenty-three, that entire budget would be shifted and then. In that reconciliation, you can see the changes as it relates to the revenues there, so.
I'm really glad you guys are looking at sustainability and making that work. That's important.
And there was only one modest in the general fund CIP, that was the powerhouse, so we would remove that, come back at a different time in February. So now onto the sewer.
And sewer does reflect the three hundred and nineteen thousand dollar production in. The rescission of that great grant. And you can also see where there's some other changes as it relates to that per employee per month. So that's changing from looking at family plans versus single to just taking it as a direct dollar amount, no matter what the employee selects. Um, that includes changes with workforce compensation, unemployment and as well as the liability transfer to that risk fund. So those are the bigger changes there on sewer operating. We included the sewer operating because there was a lot of discussion around that specific. Well, which I believe Jared and Cynthia have responded to Councilor Bosman's request on that. So just wanted to highlight that, those questions on that.
Which question was it?
It was related to the loan on the sewer, the sewer law rescission and what those impacts and changes are. So council can see here that non-apartmental miscellaneous went down compared to what was proposed.
Okay, and then. It's in there. CIP, it does include the one point five.
This does include the one point five for late night works. I believe council wanted to have further conversation and direction. The council wanted to ask any questions about that late night first project. We did not pull it, but we're just, I know it was a discussion.
Yeah, a question on that topic. So we have appropriated five hundred thousand towards the study, consulting, design, study, engineering. And now we see one point five million, but I believe the total cost at the time was estimated two point five million. And. Is there still more to come or is this?
Allison, come on up, please.
I, listen, Baker, of course. I, our total estimated engineering is two million dollars right now. We did bring that down. I think we, given the repetitions nature of a seven mile pipeline. We were, I think, being a little bit conservative in our estimate initially on the design because it will be. At one end and the other end, it will have really complicated designs. Twenty-two, it's not as complex, yet that's still included in our. Construction cost as extended, so we used a lower percentage for the total two million that we're estimating for this year.
And then the second question on the specific item. At the time, the five hundred thousand dollars was appropriated, which was in August or something like that. I think there was no discussion had with the other water right holders for potentially working together on design, studies and construction. Is that still the case, that we haven't spoken to any of the water right holders still? Because we have a very small team.
We have, um.
Jared Serp's on that.
Yeah, it's like Jared Serp on that board and I think in the budget retreat, he said that there were discussions that were happened with that board with his role in this.
Yes.
All right, so with the AOP that is ongoing and continuing means. That as far as the, we got the RFP out for our estimated five hundred thousand dollar study. That will be very highly oriented toward stakeholder outreach. Looking at needs and different possibilities, looking at different alignments. The conversation will continue with the existing board, but. Uh, I think obviously outreach and conversation about the whole process is one of our initial. Under goals to accomplish, so that would be something that we anticipate jumping into as soon as we get back.
So for this budget, do you think there is a chance that other water right holders would participate in the consulting part of the design and the studies? Impacting the proposed budget number for as far as we carry that post?
All right. I, I actually, I actually have an AOP board meeting this week. And I think one of our problems is I, I think that there could be participation from other shareholders of the AOP project. For the initial five hundred, maybe one thousand feet of this pipe. But anything other than that, we are the only shareholders who are upstream of the reservoir.
Yeah.
So that's one of the constraints that tends to take place in the conversations I have with. The AOP Conservation District with the other six partners of the project is. Most of their uses are on downstream. And so they do discuss ostensibly, hey, we, we might participate with a small segment of this pipe. And there were actually original plans that date back to twenty fourteen, fifteen for the first one thousand feet of this pipe. So we're going to be able to lend ourselves to some of that. But the use upstream is likely not going to have other participants unless other organizations buy one out of the project.
And I think that at the conclusion of this design process, there may be an opportunity where we can offer. If you would like to participate in maniacal construction, maybe you would have access to this particular outlet and this. I think there's plenty of room for time for those discussions. And I think we'll want to be real careful about how we approach it and not just go say, hey, we're doing something, we don't know what, but. You want to give us money for it? I don't think we're going to get much support with that. I think we need to have a much better. Description and documentation to provide them at that point to, to be considered. But it's, they're much larger shareholders in late night horse than we are.
I'm going to keep us moving because we are well over time. Water, did you have any issues on that? That's the water, okay.
And then that would bring us into the next meeting on the fifteenth where we move over just some of the changes. And we'll resend this out when we make those changes as to what we're reporting for the day and we can have a reconciliation.
And then remember, your questions are due in advance to staff. That was an agreed upon process. Have time to answer it and then we are efficient with our time. Daven, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you very much. All right, we are a bit behind time. Allison.
No, we're trying to go through the meeting, please. Now we are in the city.
Keith, thank you. Can I, these budget pages, can I do make a recommendation that you number the pages?
Yes, sir, I apologize.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, you are.
By the way.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Keith Doherty. I'm the city engineer here with Steve Leonard, the estimation engineer. Jim Davis is also with us in the cabin. This is an update on the Grandview Access Control Plan or ACT. This is something I'll try to keep our entries quick so that you can run through the slides over briefly, but just to rehash the agenda briefly. That this is a plan that we originally agreed to back in two thousand and eight to complete. For a number of reasons, it fell through. CDOT came back and turned it around and asked us to come back together and try to complete this access control plan, so we initiated the project. This year, twenty twenty-two. It's a project that's jointly funded between CDOT, the county and the city. Keep it at that for now. Steve, jump in and show your presentation over here.
Thanks, Keith. I, I, my. Hard point, I had my laptop or my keyboard in the machine and just created another three hundred sheets for me, so. Bear with me one second, but we have a half an hour, is that correct?
It's quick as, as quick as we can.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to focus on today.
You have a half hour which includes all questions.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to keep it, keep it brief. Is that the?
Yeah, the mouse isn't working well.
I'll keep it at twenty, twenty to twenty-five minutes.
I would suggest twenty.
If you want, I can go up there, Keith, if it's easier. Do my last turn.
It was working better up top.
Do you want to try it on this?
See if the mouse is there anywhere. I do not.
I do at the top.
Um, yeah, I see.
All right, there you go.
So now, Space Bar or? It's currently good. Okay, so we are, so we're working on an access control plan. And the project location basically starts at the current five fifty, one sixty intersection at Farmington Hill. It goes up to Elmore's Corner through Grandview. And then additionally, one seventy-two is also part of this. So that portion starts at the south end before the large corner at three oh two and goes north to Elmore. So just to give you an idea of where we're at. Goals of today, we're going to try to give you as much information in a short amount of time as possible. Talk about what an access code is versus the access control plan, present the draft, discuss the long-term. Goals, questions, comments, and then we're really going to request to take this to the public, so.
Good point. Sorry, that was one of the things I left out. Part of what I'm bringing it to is one, just so you're aware of the plan and what's going on, but. We're in a phase in the plan, we're going to the public. This is a draft plan. There's probably going to be some people who aren't very happy with the plan and we're going to go through it. So this is not a full plan, but we want to make sure you're aware. So if you hear anything, come back and answer questions when we're standing over there.
So purpose and need of this is those are two very highly traveled roadways in and around Durango. One sixty as of year twenty twenty and CDOT's system had about twenty-three thousand ADT. It's trending towards thirty. In the next twenty years, Highway one seventy-two is less, obviously, but that one's actually got a few more problems because there's so many direct access points up in that. So the exhibit at the right is kind of showing as you start. You started a local street and as you. the exhibit at the right is kind of showing as you start um, you start at a local street and as you increase as you increase traffic on this, you start trending towards freeway and the way to accommodate those extra cars and vehicles is by having more throughput, but decreasing the access point locations. So that's really what this plan is trying to do is start to give the city and county planners tools uh over the next 20 years so that they can uh have a plan basically to implement. Uh, the city of Durango actually has an access control plan right now for Camino Del Rio from the Doubletree intersection north. Um, I believe it's all the way to the Main Street Bridge, uh if not a little past that. So you do have one of these in effect right now. Um, currently, these two roads are are dictated by the state of Colorado Highly Access Control Code. Um, that is uh basically the law of the road. So if somebody goes out, wants to get an access point, um there's a very specific set of guidelines that they have to work through to obtain access. They have to prove that they are not creating the system in such a way that it's going to harm it. Um, but it doesn't really speak to future land uses, uh future access points or future growth on the on the corridor. So it's kind of the first one in gets to do what they want to do and then eventually you put enough straws on the camel's back and you break it. So that that's what we're trying to move away from. And what we're trying to move towards is an access control plan. This is uh the picture in the lower right is on uh Camino Del Rio. I think that's the actual Main Street intersection on the right side there. So you have one of these in effect. You're basically showing we're going to close access points along this. You're trying to consolidate them. You're trying to move them towards the minor intersections and away from the the major streets and the major materials. So that's what we're moving towards. Interesting. Yep. This is just a kind of a compare and contrast of the two uh different methodologies and the access code does not go away. It just kind of starts working in concert with the access control plan. And I've kind of talked through this, so I'm going to kind of skip over that side. The benefits of an access control plan, um in the image at the right, um most of your accidents occur on left turns. Uh, those are the big conflict points. Those are the ones that we see on Camino Walmart, Home Depot, downtown all the time. Those are those are the T-bones that are occurring currently. And if you implement an access control plan and and all of the improvements are implemented, they generally reduce uh crashes by 30 to 60% by getting all of those left turns out of the corridor. The severity of the crashes go down. You start to see side swipes. Um, you start to see rear ends, but you don't see as many just T-bones and very uh very high impact crashes. So that's what we're trying to uh to make happen up here. Um, traffic flow, you actually are able to increase the flow through the existing uh traffic lanes. So 160 is a prime example. There's four lanes out there now. You can generally get 16,000 to 18,000 cars through the lanes per day while we just saw a exhibit that says 30,000 is where we're heading. That's going to be very close to the limit of that road in the in the 20 years in the future. So CDOT is going to start to see the levels of service on those roads degrade. And and this is actually going to help with some of some of their traffic flow problems. So that's that's another benefit to this. Um, techniques that that are used is you basically take on this exhibit on the left side. You have many access points. You're trying to consolidate them. You're trying to have add frontage roads. Um, upper right, you're trying to close access points and force things onto secondary roads. So that's that's some of the goals. And then at the bottom, some other things that are are being implemented are auxiliary lanes. So you've got acceleration lanes, decel lanes, left turn pockets, right turn um pockets, things like that. So all of those are kind of working in concert to make the road as safe as possible, limit left turns and go from there. Location of the project, I'm I'm going to reiterate, you know, Farmington Hill, Alta Elmore's and then 302 back into town. Um, again, this is just more background on the the classifications of the roads uh today. So we've got approximately three miles of 160. Not all of that's in city limits, but I think most of it's in the joint planning district and then State Highway 172. We've got about, again, three and a half miles of that road that, you know, as we're doing all of this, we're we're really doing one corridor for for both of these. But it it is a joint project between uh the city and CDOT. Um, again, the goals are to provide safe travel, uh make it as efficient as possible. Um, we're not trying to go out and close access points. We're not trying to take, you know, land rights and things from uh the property owners. And the one thing that I wish CDOT were here, but Dan and Randy, who we've been working with in the access department, are really good about saying is if things don't change, meaning if things don't change on the property, things aren't going to change with their access until there's a city project, there's a a county project, or there's a CDOT project. So this isn't something that's going to be implemented and then all of a sudden everything's going to go out and change right away. It's going to be part of a bigger project and CDOT has been doing the the bigger project is part of the access control plan through downtown. So there may be, like he said, some sensitivity to that, but CDOT's trying to do this in a way that maintains these um access points for the adjacent properties. Um, and if if status quo remains on somebody's property, it's not going to change overnight. It's going to be part of a bigger project. It's going to be part of funding through one of these three agencies. So just just be aware that the plan is not that this gets imposed and well, suddenly we go out and start mailing people, you know, cease and desist for for accessing the highway. That being said, when this get impl- gets implemented, the city planners and the county planners are going to be able to look at this and say, okay, is this developing in concert with the access control plan? Are we doing the right thing? So just want to throw that out.
So it could have impact on on the value of certain pieces of property.
It it could. Um, I would say, and I know that's always an argument and and I know with planning, we're always saying, well, you can't vote on that with with a project, but I would say in in most instances, it should be adding value to these properties because it's it's creating a safe corridor. It's creating the ability for them to access this and the ability for these properties to redevelop in a way that that under the access code, they may be paying millions of dollars for improvements that don't improve that only improve their property. So you're doing all these piecemeal improvements. So it it's kind of the get all this together, figure it out, and then implement it slowly over time. So I don't know if that answered your question or not, but. Um, so anyway, yeah, the other goals, you know, there is the 160 EIS um out there which has very specific frontage roads, access points. Um, so we're we're also developing this in concert uh with those with those types of plans that are already out there. And this is kind of what I just talked about. It is a living document. It can be amended if the city, county, and CDOT agree to it. Um, basically, like he said, we're we're trying to get to a public meeting. There will be revisions and then when all three of the government agencies are uh in agreement, there would be like a MOA or MOU that would be uh filed between the three and then this would would go into effect. Um, this is actually um part of what is going to be uh seen by the public and and presented. So jumping right into it, this is Farmington Hill and the plan is for what CDOT gets the Grandview interchange and the connection done through Web Ranch that this connection will go away. So things like this, we're showing is, you know, in the key and and it's kind of tough to read, but this would be an access point that's going to go away. The yellow would be an access point that's going to stay. So pretty self-explanatory uh on those two that the ramp, I I think that's ramp D, going into the Grandview interchange is going to stay. So I'll just scroll to the next slide. This is the CNG gravel access point. We're actually kind of uh Keith and I are in long conversations, so um, there's a little more to this one and I I don't want to jump totally into the weeds, but they're looking at some redevelopment on that property. We're working with them as a part of the Smart 160 Trail Design. We've showed it as a right in, right out. Ideally, we get rid of that, but there's some issues with fire um code uh requirements and secondary access that we're still working on. So for right now, we're showing a right in, right out.
So I think this is one of the ones that shocks people's mind a lot of times. You have the big trucks that are trying to enter the highway. They're slow. You have people trying to exit the highway. They're very slow. It's disrupting traffic. It's causing for that unsafe situation because that's where a lot of accidents happen is in that change change of speed, right? And some people going 15, some people going 10, that's where you get accidents. So limiting their access or changing their access to the highway makes it safer.
Yeah. So those are exactly the ones that we want to get rid of, the ZIMRO connection. That that would be their target access. So again, the Grandview interchange, nothing's happening there. Um, the this is where it's my eyes are failing me, but um, the county road 232, that right in, right out would would stay, but um the plan is to get rid of the southward gateway mini storage, access provide them, access through to Davidson Court and and get that off the highway. So um that's that's where we're heading with those. The right in, right out off Davidson would ideally go away. The um Mondragon uh Funeral Hall would go away. The right in, right out here would go away. Um, we're not showing those correctly and that's some of the iteration that we're still going through right now. But these eventually would turn orange and have access through them. Everything on the south side of the road, we're going to be uh proposing frontage roads. This is part of the 160 EIS. All of those commercial properties, target rental currently is on the frontage road, but that would be extended to the east tie-in. Sorry, that would tie in uh the other one we need to get uh on here is the gas station um and the Upper East Side Cafe, like that little weird meme, that would go away and be just solely frontage road. The Three Springs intersection stays. Then you get into all of these access points through through uh Grandview. We're proposing all of those go away and it's it's kind of hard to see, but they're faded out, but there's a network of frontage and backage roads as a part of the 160 EIS that would eventually become county roads um since they're currently in the county. But those would allow for access off the um I guess it'd be north side of these properties and then you'd have a frontage on the south side where all of these access points would go away. And like I said, the status quo right now would be you're not going to go in and you're not going to say they can't access these, but as a part of a larger future project, you would be trying to get as many of these off onto a a backage road as possible. The one that always comes to mind is the Fund Center as a very front-facing and I I forget if it's a Dollar General or uh what, yeah, exactly what it is. But those types of things, we would have to have a conversation about, you might build this road, but they may still be accessing the highway until they redevelop in the future. And that may be a very long time down the road, but this at least gives you a planning document to have that conversation. So it all makes sense. Um, again, continuing east, we're just, we're closing access points. We're we're wrapping the frontage road back to the north. We're tying into County Road 233. I know that the county has plans to extend that up to um County Road 234 off of Elmore's. Uh, Valley Escondido would go away. That would tie into um, there's actually an underpass shown under 160 to uh provide a local network um in this area. So that's part of the 160 EIS. So we're showing that again.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On that previous slide. First of all, I think it's great that this is exactly what is needed, a bit of a long-term vision for the area in earliest possible stage. So every property owner and developer can uh plan accordingly. On these two houses right in the middle, I mean, they don't have a back access to a frontage road. How do you handle that? Is that not a good problem?
Are you talking about the triangle here and here or?
It's left to the left, yeah.
Oh, um, we've talked about that and we um, we would have to basically put a T-intersection here and add kind of a a little spur row to this one. Um, so that that came up a lot of those, so I'll make a note on that if you catch.
But that is the idea is that there would be a bigger project to create a road in the back so that you could create another access point for them to go from the rear or switch the direction from the south and go to the north.
Yeah, but that would require, you know, right away, I guess, an acquisition.
These are not small projects to to make this happen. So, yeah, I I don't want to make it sound like this is an easy thing to do, but it it is the document that kind of lays the roadmap for everybody. But yes, I'll, that that's a very good catch on those two. So, yeah, we'll we'll update that. Um, again, um, getting up closer to Elmore's um on the south side, there would be a county road that um, this one as you get closer to Elmore's, you don't want to dump um that right into 172 at the intersection and that'll become a little more apparent um through some of the 172 plans, but we do have a a local road a little further south. I guess the KOA is here. So after you get past the KOA, then you start to drop further south and then the cemetery will be um on the corner here. So that would tie in south of the cemetery. So that's the 160 corridor. Um, questions, comments, thoughts, somebody, anything so far?
I just wanted to thank you, Keith, for responding to my questions about what were the staff's concerns and I'm sure you'll be working on how to mitigate those concerns and the impacts on the on the property. So, thank you.
Sure. Okay, and then we're into 172. This this is again 302s here. So you're on the sharp corner on the south end of the project um showing keeping um the 302 access open. Uh, there's access points through here that were basically we're showing almost all of these closing uh through here where we've got the green areas is kind of showing you, okay, we're going to plant seed in there. We're going to re-vedge it. We're going to turn it back to, you know, basically uh uh what the the ditches look like. So on both the, I guess it'd be the west and east side of 172, we're showing frontage roads through this area. No direct uh access to the state highway in these. When we get closer to the, I'm going to draw a blank on these county roads, but um
Just in various northwards to the right, running north towards Elmore's.
Will the county roads be wide enough to provide simple traffic as well?
Good question.
So this is a good question. Uh, I don't know if that was in the EIS when it was done.
I'm going to say 2010 was the last.
I can see where it would be desired and maybe in 2010 you didn't think about having that, you know, the frugality was driving things rather than. Well, yeah, most of the county roads don't have easements.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, Jim, if you want to have any comment related to this, but I think in terms of again, this is an evolution of the road system. Originally, it might be more county standards and it may not incorporate uh bike lanes to start with.
You could write your bike on it anyways. It's just whether or not you have enough of a shoulder.
Right. I think it's look at the rightway available versus the road section.
Yeah, and and one thing.
Do you want to answer, sir?
No, I was just going to add the directive decision of US 160 EIS, it's 2006. I don't think people envisioned where it got into the details of that and what lines or whether it's urban section, urban gutter or not. Think that was envisioned as part of the season.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we haven't really spoken to rightaway needs at this point. I I think your guys' standard narrowest is 60 feet. Is that a correction? Yeah, so yeah, then it becomes a little more into the specifics. So um, anyway, Florida Meadows Courts and Summer Way would be this intersection. Um, again, frontage and backage roads. We're proposing to close all of these access points through here. You can kind of see that there may be some You can kind of see that there may be some ditch realignments needed for, I believe it's the Florida Farmers Ditch on the Mesa there. Tying into, I believe it's 220, 221, that would be a major access point signaledized. We'd be trying to feed as much traffic through that as possible. Again, continuing that road on the west side. There's a lot of small parcels on the west side. These are all residential, single-family homes. Again, if and when this project or plan becomes a reality, you're not going to do this overnight. But if some of them came in and redeveloped or, you know, like a commercial land developer, somebody came in and wanted to do something on multiple properties, they would be the ones trying to figure this out. Or it's a CDOT County FHWA project that's going to trigger these. You get into the school on the east side, that would have a signalized intersection in all of these properties and access points would be removed. You'd have connectivity to the south in the, forgetting the name of that project.
Do you know what the, this is the project name is?
Okay, so there's all that development going out there. There would be some connectivity back and forth between there. This slide is showing the connectivity back to 160 and 172. This is kind of a tough view, but this is in the quadrant southwest of Elmore's Corner showing some of the connectivity that we weren't able to pick up on those other maps. This is the last slide of the actual design, but more right in, right outs. We're somewhat struggling and this is going to be some more conversations between CDOT and the engineers, both with the city and county. But we're showing a roundabout right now just south of Elmore's because we're trying to wrap a frontage road on both sides. And this parcel on the southeast corner is a potential commercial property for the county. So we're showing a roundabout now. It doesn't need spacing for signalized intersections, so that's in there for now. So.
So.
Yes.
Jim and also the mayor brought up a good point. Bicycle access. So from Durango to Bayfield and Durango to Ignacio, that's what these two roads take us to. So those are our three major metropolitan areas in the county. Is this plan taking into account that kind of access for cycles?
Currently it is not. I would say the three of us need to go back and discuss with CDOT. I don't know that I've ever seen an access control that speaks to bicycles.
As I was going to say, I think this is really more about access control than necessarily designing a section. So they go together.
I think the question is, what is the desired outcome, right? And if one of the objectives is a multimodal connectivity between the communities and it wasn't considered back in 2006 with all the progress that we have made in this area and the county, it might need to be on the table, it may not be the only point, but it may be one.
Right, I think, I don't disagree with that. I think what I'm saying is that the access control plan really tells you where should access happen. Be like acceleration waves, deceleration waves, right? Then when you get to that project, what is it actually going to happen? Then you can design what the road section is going to be. How to accommodate bikes or other modes of transportation.
When you get to actually building the road.
Right, when the redevelopment happens or the CDOT County City Project, whenever there's a bigger project that actually says, how is this going to redevelop? The plan gives you an outline of where do you connect? And then that's a little bit separate of how do you design the road section to accommodate the different modes of transportation?
But bicycles might not use the road section. For example, we can take Mercy once we get our Smart 160 Trail up.
Right.
And so maybe the bicycle access isn't about being right on the highway. But we need to take that into account because if it isn't right on the highway, it needs to be somewhere else. And so we either need to do it on the highway because it may be near the highway between Elmore's Corner and Bayfield, for example, or the road to Ignacio. But I think we need to look at that idea because if we just plan based upon what you're talking about, we're not going to end up with bicycle access.
Right, and I think that can happen in different pieces at when those developments happen, right? Is you can look on the south side and say, oh, do you want the bikes at the frontage road? Do you want the highway? Do we need to have a trail? Do we need to have a PRT extended in that location? So I think those all look together.
It'd be nice to have a view of the optimum before you.
Yeah, let me throw a couple of things at you.
And I am going to keep this moving on the time because we're.
We're at the last slide, so. The one thing I would throw at you is if you truly want to figure out how to get bikes from Durango to Bayfield and Ignacio, I think that's more of a multimodal master plan and that's a whole nother animal. I would suggest that as part of the memorandum that you're going to sign with CDOT and the county is that there's some verbiage in there that says, as part of these projects, multimodal facilities need to be incorporated into the design.
Awesome.
Construction of the future. And I think that's pretty, I don't know that it's in there on some of the others, but I feel like that should be something that I know Keith will probably bring up.
And would you add transit stations as well when you think about that design? I know it's one thing, well, you immediately think about bicycle, but I'm also wanting to get the specifics of, particularly on the highway, would there be transit stops?
I think that becomes way more project specific too and I would suggest the verbiage, but yeah, I'll let Keith.
Well, if you want to get out to the airport, you need to be able to stop. You could take frontage roads, but you could also take the highway and would need a pickup point.
Yep. I just want to say it's really good to see that we're looking ahead on the vision as early as possible. So this plan is great, it has a starting point or maybe a final plan, depends what the next steps are. Appreciate the email too, the opposing cause. To what degree do we have influence on what is being proposed? We as a city, this is our county property, with this plan, a modified plan? And does it all line up with the connectivity? I think you mentioned verbiage in there for multimodal. Is there, like, when you look at these plans, what I'm missing is the, for example, tunnels. And that would be a problem to go from north to south for pedestrians and cyclists. Is that something that, I mean, how does that move forward?
Maybe the first question you posed there is, one of the things that we've struggled with in the past is when we're in this joint planning area of making these decisions and being firm about them. And I think this plan gives us a better way of being firm, even though we're not necessarily the authority here yet in this sense of still the county or subject jurisdiction, right? But it is in our joint planning boundary and our complaint boundary. So we do have interest in trying to answer this and give people direction as they're trying to develop for the future and how to do it. And it gives us a consistent message with the city and CDOT. We're all reading from the same plan and saying, this is what you should try to hit.
Is it, for example, possible to take these plans when you have, I'm not sure if this is final or close to final for those public? Is it possible to get a rough line for the north side? I think we have the Smart 160, but the connections to the south, on the south side of the 160. And then on the 172, whatever options there are, I mean, just to give it a first shot, I guess, on the multi, I mean, maybe that is, there is a multimodal visioning, but they don't cover county properties. Gets a little problematic there. How do we get from that point to this point and then say to the public, here's a vision? And this is a vision, I'm very happy that this stayed in place.
Yeah, I think some of that's already kind of shown in there right out. Maybe not quite so obvious to see, but there's some of those roads and those plans in here. And like Steve was saying, I think they're, it's a living document. So as the developments happen, if we need to adjust, that can still happen. But I think the first stab at it is in here and then we go through this public process. We take our second stab at it and then it becomes that living document ultimately that over time, we can still adjust, but this is the starting place. The next 10 years is what we think is going to happen and in 10 years it might be.
So I'm going to thank you for your presentation, for involving us. I know this is not the end-all, we're coming back. We'll be having some public engagement and you'll be keeping some form of the timeline. Ready for it to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, folks, on the 2005 sales tax and the reallocation of the lodgers tax. If you'll come to the table, those involved. Jose, are you setting this up in some way?
Just to follow up to council, not really set up.
Okay.
Going back from our biggest conversation in June. July.
Devin, are we talking, we're talking one at a time?
So what I was going to do, Mayor, Council, Devin Schmidt, Budget Strategic Plan Officer, was take you through the presentation. We have the staff here that's part of the team available to answer questions and then provide enough time for council to have discussion around the topic.
We, you have been cut short a bit of time.
I will try to make it up.
Now, I will also ask that we make our questions, you know, pretty specific to you. So with council support, let's go to at least five, possibly 505.
Well, the other option too is we have a conversation about the 2005 sales tax or lodger's tax and put the other one onto another.
That's an option too.
I would prefer that option. To do. Please wait, what were you talking about? No, to split up the two discussions as council back to you just.
So we'll go to five.
Okay, is there a preference from council whether we discuss the 2005 or the lodger's tax?
Well, actually, I was going to suggest the 2005 because that takes, may take more time. And the lodger's tax, some people have said they wanted to see how the vote comes out. It's part of that discussion. So is there support to do the 2005? Okay.
Excellent. So as I mentioned, this is an interdepartmental team. Council had asked the team to consider the 2005 and we did consider the lodger's tax currently as two areas. And so there will be some refresher slides in here from the July 5th conversation, which I won't spend too much time, some councils already seen those. And again, staff is here to answer any questions. So we will just take you through the 2005, I'll skip over lodger's tax and we can kind of just jump into that conversation. So what we're, purpose of the item is, so we're looking for, since we're not discussing lodger's tax at this one, I guess the question really then is should the city reauthorize the 2005 sales tax for a same or different purpose? And does this lead to a 2023 question? So. So as we're looking at the 2005 sales tax, this is the slide that council has seen previously. We did want to show again where Durango sits as it relates to the different earmarked taxes compared to other communities. Glenwood Springs is the closest with the number of special revenues and about this closest amount as it relates to that as well. The 2005 sales tax ballot language, council has seen that as well. So this just explains what the uses can be for that. So I won't read through that, but we did want to include it in the packet as part of the conversation about what is included for both sides of that half cent tax. Previously, I think council was looking for more information as it relates to the budgetary or financial. So this slide is representative of the post-revenues, what they've been spent on historically as well as the library for Florida Road. So there's been a total of 64 million since it was authorized in 2005. This slide represents the 2005 sales tax revenue through 2022. So it's kind of showing those use of funds, looking at the different projects that have been completed with the sales tax as well as the library and the Florida Road debt service. You will see on here too that there are some, there's a star in here that reflects that some GoCo grants were part of the partnership as it relates to some of these projects getting completed. So I'm going to skip through lodger's tax. So on this slide, since the discussion is on the 05, this is the projected, should council desire to reauthorize, reallocate the same percentage of sales tax, it would generate in the 20 years that it was in place, 156,824,000. So wanted to provide council that dollar figure on an annual basis. It's right around that five to 5.5 million, just depending on those as it projects and as the community grows, we see additional revenues there. So again, needs and potential uses. So this is looking at housing, economic development, preservation of acquisition, maintenance lands, trails as well as public transit, CIP specifically sidewalks, roads, bridge repair replacements, stormwater alleys, and then finally, city facilities. So as we're looking at the parks, open space and trails, after this tax unsets, there's no dedicated sales tax for annual parks, trails and recreation facilities. Maintenance and improvements, funding for Durango Trails is about 40K a year and other community programs. Most projects on the five-year CIP are renovation and maintenance. So that includes the Animus River Trail segments and the park restrooms. Annual open space maintenance and fire mitigation of 50K. The programs in the infancy stages and certainly anticipate a need to grow. Natural lands trail easement acquisition, there's still many projects to fund, about 400K a year. And then the interfund transfer to support post-maintenance and operations is about 375,000. So in the current CIP planned for 2022 through 2027, for the 05, 37% or about 4.1 million is allocated for improvements to existing facilities. And in the 2015, 61% or 5.6 million is allocated for improvements to existing facilities. That's just post-projects, not multimodal.
If I may, I want to make a comment on the natural lands trail easement acquisitions. There, other than one project that council's aware of, there are no projects on the list to fund natural lands open space acquisition.
And there are a part of you who've been talking to various landowners now. You still haven't listed in that identified, you just need those.
Right, but council's supposed to have a conversation about a policy on natural lands acquisition and where we want to go with this. What's its purpose? Is it connectivity? Is it just to expand acquisition of lands? What's the purpose? And so I'm just kind of objecting to the thing that there's still many projects to fund when we actually don't have that policy and we don't actually have a list of things. We've been contacting owners of properties for years and years and years and never done anything with that. So.
We do have operation in our poster master plan, which kind of combines a policy. Also, that's zones where we can be looking at acquisitions, whether the rentals or open space plans. We need to review that.
Well, the natural lands board doesn't exist now and doesn't have that conversation, so it's a good idea. Thank you, Terry. Hopeful to know.
So as we're looking at the dollar figures, so we're looking at potential use of funds for parks, open space and trails and recreation. You can see that the totals there is about 332 million. So if we're looking at new park development, park improvements, recreation center expansion or new trail upgrades, new trails, trailheads, recreation amenities and river access, those are where those figures are coming through as it relates to those potential costs to achieve the post-parks and trails by project type, so.
Does that, does that include Durango Mesa?
Yes, it does.
And that is for what timeframe?
So this is, this is under the poster master plan. It's really kind of gives a whole scheme of all the projects within this and then it now by project title.
Yeah.
So it includes, you know, rec center expansion, maybe new rec center, includes all of those.
So all of those projects could be funded through the 2015, not all of them in their entirety, but any of these that are on this project, it seems, even the purchase of land could be funded through the 2015 sales tax.
Yeah, this isn't just what would be funded by the 2005.
But they, yeah, I want to refund it. And this is just really kind of trying to show you that this is what our poster master plan identified because of the project.
Sure, and we know that that included the kitchen sink.
Well, it was a wish list. Yeah, it was everything. It wasn't, it wasn't, it didn't take into account the revenues that we might actually be collecting and what we could actually build with that. And so I really, I mean, I was here during that time and I, it's just the same kind of comment that I made. It's a wish list, it's not a need, it's a, let's just get everything possible we can on a piece of paper. So I really think we need to take a critical look at. So I really think we need to take a critical look at that and come through it really critically because it's.
It's a good starting point and we get an idea of what, what, what costs are potentially there.
I will say that the first current advisory board goes to that this prior to taxes, more near and.
I understand that, but the, the list was not made with the idea in mind of how much revenue was going to be collected in the next ten years. It was just a list of everything they would possibly want to build or have. And I think that's the critical difference there. So it wasn't, yeah.
I appreciate this breakdown though. It's helpful to see it by areas, improvements, trail upgrades, recreation center expansion. Um, because one of the questions I had was what, you know, our cost to maintain our parks and recreation projects, which I know is substantial, um, and will in, increase a lot over the next ten years. Um, as we can see, you know, the cost is one point five million just for a section of a river trail to upgrade. So, so this is helpful to kind of see some of this breakdown.
And that's why when we release slide, we're trying to show you current capital, that we, and then there's, we are probably some of those of the trans.
Right.
We're also touching on hopefully with our graphics, we've got a report that finishes snapshot and timing where our park system looks like. Right now, we're looking at about, you know, the one point three million dollars to take on our fourth, and we're starting to, to, to level that we are. Um, so we'll hopefully have someone for that information, sure.
That's great.
I'm, I'm saying you're responsible for the post-master plan project that created the three hundred and thirty two million dollars with the projects because I know you're not. This is long, this is before your time. And so I also recognize that's before Jose's time and the philosophy in the city is changing too about maintaining what we have, not building more than we can maintain and, and projecting for construction or projects within our means, not, not just because it's possible. So I want to acknowledge that and say I'm not blaming you for it.
I'm gonna bring us back to Devon's presenting rather than, than a free-for-all out in this.
Can you go back a couple of slides? I just wanted to see the uh. Was, uh, did it say the maintenance cost for the?
Oh, good question.
Or is this the maintenance cost?
Is it there that transferred the support payments?
Oh, yeah. Uh, improving. Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, we have to combine the two cost factors and maintenance as well as capital. It's interesting to note that there's an economic benefit. It was the economic um impact of a multiplier of two point five. I think it was a two point seven, I'm not sure if Terry, you know, what the economic impact is. Yeah, so you're actually investing, you actually get more back in theory at least.
This is good support. Yeah, I, I would agree that the maintenance is uh insufficient and it needs to be addressed as part of the asset management plan.
Um, okay, so on to housing. So um this slide is uh simple intentionally, but it's really reflecting the yearly subsidy needed. Um, so in twenty eighteen, the housing plan goal was a thousand units, a thousand affordable units by twenty forty. Um, the current um inventory um is five hundred seventy three affordable units, so there's four hundred and twenty seven remaining. Um, twenty units per year needed um for a thousand by twenty forty. So what this is showing is that if you do twenty four units at about seventy two thousand, you need one point seven million. Um, on an ownership basis, it's twenty four units times two hundred thousand, which is four point eight million. Um, and then uh we have on there the subsidy gap from the three-year workforce housing investment strategy um is also a, a note too.
Would you define affordable?
Yes, um, Eva has an innovation image. Affordable often is typically defined at eighty percent or less area income. Workforce is often defined eighty percent area income to a hundred and forty percent area income for all of this.
So this slide only applies to eighty percent and below. Great, thank you. I just want to make that really clear.
Did you say workforce is eighty to one forty?
Eighty to one forty for all of this.
And this data was based on the twenty eighteen study, which was probably conducted in twenty seventeen. Doesn't take into effect the intensity of purchasing that's taken place in the last two years. So don't you need more housing units than is reflected on this chart?
Yes, correct. We wanted to start with sort of a snapshot using the twenty eighteen housing program and that specific goal that was identified in the plan. That was just a simple metrics in the, in the slide that has twenty four units a year, we need to meet that goal. The housing needs assessment that was created by new policy that sources three hundred and ten units required on an annual ongoing basis, reflective of two fifty for rental and ownership.
What's that from, the three ten?
Sure, it's the new policy that needs analysis for regions.
Oh, okay, okay.
And where is that in this presentation?
It's not.
It's not.
She sees this as our plan.
And just, uh, so if I understand this correct, the two hundred thousand dollars is what is needed to buy down the value of the house to make it in that bracket for.
Approximately, that's what the source in the workforce.
It's the gap between what the um contractor can build it for and what he needs to sell it for, and it's affordable. It's not about buying, buying down the house. No, it's about construction. Um, and I just want to point out that in affordable for eighty percent under, there's a lot of federal programs, um, tax incremental, tax financing and, and all sorts of things, vouchers and things like that. We have, at this point, um, the closest one on a state or federal level for workforce is uh Prop one twenty three that's on the ballot in November. So right now that there isn't a lot of support for workforce on the governmental level. Just want to point that out.
Okay, so this is taking consideration the existing units. Um, so nine thousand one hundred eighty seven. Um, affordable rentals is five hundred and sixty four of that or six percent, and affordable homeownership is nine. Yeah, so it almost agrees to about zero percent when you're looking at it um from that level. So that's the, kind of the where we're at today type of analysis.
Oh, okay.
As it relates to the.
This is where we are today.
Well, and that, partially that's because under affordable eighty percent and below, that's not usually homeownership, that's usually rental. So there's a, it's a different market too.
And you've got it broken out here.
Yeah, because she talks about the homeownership being zero, but there's a reason for that. It's a different market.
So if I'm looking at this correctly, I want to make sure I am, using the lowest numbers, the old numbers, twenty four units needed per year rather than the three hundred and ten units needed per year, you're looking at a minimum of six, let's see, that would be six point, five point five, almost um six point five, is that right? Six point five million per year? Just to do the low numbers, the old low numbers.
What are you doing there?
I'm getting it at, what she means is the one point seven to do the twenty four and the.
That total, yes, forty. If you total them together.
If you total them together, you'd get forty eight. Okay.
Yeah, so she's, I think.
So you're saying you need six, if you put them together, you'd need six point five million.
But you, are you suggesting on this page, just so I understand it correctly, since it's essentially, you, you're asked, we know that we need twenty four units per year. So either or, or half and half.
Yeah, I, I went into this slide again, just trying to see the housing plan as.
Yeah.
As a metric to start with. And if I change the numbers between twenty four rental, maybe it's ten rental minutes, fourteen on the ownership side, that would shift sort of the scale of which, you know, homeownership is going to cost more because the, the subsidy is higher for rental. So it will really fluctuate on how many units you're trying to target over time.
No, this is helpful for us to kind of even see. I appreciate it.
The question though, we've said this for, for previous council, that goal is old and maybe it should be moved up or maybe the goal, the number should be increased. And then we get a, a current report that says we need three hundred and ten units a year. So I'm just wondering why we're even talking about twenty four instead of something closer to what it is we need to, to address this crisis.
Sure, I think this is probably the first time you've seen it even like this.
Sure. Yeah.
And I think too, I could have inflated the number by targeting the needs analysis for the three hundred and ten units. We can certainly come back and show you that in a different slide. The difference for that though is I tried to take into consideration the ballot question that's at hand and sort of targeting, if housing wasn't the, was one aspect of the ballot question for reauthorization, I could show an inflated number that was a hundred million dollars, but when we're talking about sort of a muddled approach, possibly.
Well, that's what you have with parks and rec. You have an inflated number of three hundred million.
Right, right.
So let me.
I think, I think, I think, I could have certainly come a different slide with the needs analysis from the policy. It was, it was a number much more sort of in it.
Yes.
Eva, the three ten again, um, from September, that report was, was from where?
Is from the uh region uh needs analysis study that was completed, um, that's in our policy.
It's not specific to Durango. It's a region. That's why three hundred and ten might actually be high because it's not that.
But if you said a hundred, you would need four, just even if it was a hundred rental units, you would need four times the amount of money you projected. And so that's the difference. You've got one presentation that has the Uber list and you've got you with not enough to even make a net in what we're trying to achieve. I appreciate that. I appreciate it, but trying to, you know, not inflate it, but we also need to know what is, what is needed to do the job.
But as of now, we haven't updated our twenty eighteen housing policy as a city.
That's right.
We have not. And so I, you know, I, I see why you went off of that. It makes sense. Um, but we may need to update that, you know, and that maybe should get on the docket for some point. And, and maybe, you know, we can have that discussion today when we're talking about our housing updates and our, you know, some of, during our council meeting, looking for its back.
And then the next one, public transit?
Yeah, so in public transit, um, the fund is expected to be at two point five million um at the end of twenty twenty two. Um, the current projections include twenty percent of the lodger's tax, um, which has shown, um, the fund reaches a zero balance in twenty twenty six. So this uh kind of chart down here is showing what's happening with transit. Um, so without that lodger's tax portion, the, the, the fund would really go broke in twenty twenty four. Um, with transit's full vision of expansion in twenty twenty four, um, it, 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 it happens anyway if, if transit does move forward with that um full expansion project. So transit really needs about one point three million, um, starting in twenty twenty four and addition to the twenty percent of the lodger's taxes stay solvent at the current service levels.
And that's the current service levels, not the expansion.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if you could talk about full vision expansion.
Um.
Yeah, so, but, but uh, the objective is about two point three million for, to get, to get to the expansion level to be like, see, which is shortening up the headways and also reaching areas of. So add two point three, that, there's a slide a little further on that shows the main, number, yeah, max loads.
Okay, once again to the mayor's point, this one is pared down and out of full blown wish list.
No.
We don't, it's not, it's not the big picture vision, so it's gonna be higher.
That's it, that's in another slide.
Excellent.
It was summary of that call.
And um question again, also on headways for the desired full vision, if we are going from, is it thirty minutes to twenty?
Correct, but even twenty minutes, a lot of things, they, um, very, we want to get all people to be somewhere with the intent of.
That would be nice.
Yeah. But just to go to twenty and then to expand the service addition areas could be.
Okay.
So the total, to be clear, to continue, what we have is one point three to do what Sarah presented to us a while is two point three. So she really needs three point six million a year of secure funding. Did you say, oh, I thought you said. Oh, one point six. It says one point three here. Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll take your numbers, three point nine million per year.
Including.
Yes, foundation. Would allow for current services and expansion. Okay, thank you.
Um, and then into street stormwater CIP, so the current revenue state is obviously streets is currently included in that twenty nineteen sales tax. Um, stormwater is currently in the general fund, um, currently looking at funding sources for the future. The challenges with the revenue sources is that streets and right-of-way um does have adequate roadway funding until the tax expires in twenty twenty nine. Um, but it did not necessarily take into account the needed sidewalk, uh, districts, bridge improvement, funding, alleyway improvements, ADA ramps, stormwater management, CIP implementation. Um, and, you know, in the conversation in the twenty twenty three budget was, we're doing two hundred thousand for um alleys and only a hundred thousand for um sidewalks. And so um that piece kind of is reflective there. And then um the general fund, um, as it's listed here, is just insufficient for that annual maintenance activities as it relates to uh water facilities. Um, and, and preceding slides again, we'll kind of do a recap here where we're showing all of the requests there. And then finally, in the facility needs, um, currently we have the building maintenance fund. Um, the challenges, um, as council saw in the twenty three budget process, there's not a, a transfer into that fund in twenty twenty three considered. The potential uses could be maintenance, repair, remodel of existing facilities or purchase a new facility using debt financing, which would require a ballot question for any proposed debt. So this is um the slide that Wade was referencing, um, where we're looking at the overview of needs and opportunities. Um, so at a, at a minimum, um, on an annual basis, plus we'll be looking at two point seven million. And a maximum basis, it would be ten million. Um, housing on a minimum is one point seven and on a max is four point eight. Transportation is one point six and three point nine on a max. Um, stormwater is six hundred thousand and two point six on a max. Alleys is one point five and one point five, and that would be to do a, a full alley reconstruction. And then sidewalks is five hundred thousand and five hundred thousand. And facilities, this is looking at if the city were to do a ballot question in depth for that payment, it's anywhere from one point seven to two point six. What the graph is showing to the right is the blue kind of background here, that's that max. This dark blue um in the front there, that's that minimum. And then if you were to take um lodger's tax in two thousand and five, uh, and combine the two for potential funding, it would be that nine point three. So that would be, um, if there is, uh, that's the two funding buckets.
So, just a quick question on the lodger's tax is, uh, were you just recommend, were you just making assumptions or making some recommendations on reallocation possibilities?
Um, staff wasn't making many recommendations around reallocation. I believe, um, what we heard from council was that, um, there was conversation around, uh, seeing what happens with the question in November.
Yes.
And then, um, if there was a desire for council to do any of that reallocation, this is just showing it in a very holistic bucket about how much money we break in and.
Okay, but that's including marketing.
That's including everything that's all right now.
Yeah.
Like my, I think my um desire for more information would be on the uh transit and transportation. If there, how much would be, that is tied to lodgers, I think, and as well. And it would be interesting to see how much lodger's tax potentially could fund uh under different scenarios. And then on uh your presentation, I received a revenue from different sources, but for housing, I didn't see much of the revenues, I believe, uh, accurate revenues for the transfer fees, if you knew, and any other sources of uh income. Because if I remember well, we'll have that meeting later, the twin views is expected to be one million or over a million a year on uh transfer fees alone. And it was higher, I believe, than anticipated, or do you remember the number? Since we have the.
Uh, did you, on the transfer fees, I think you were the one doing the presentation of for twin views of the, where we were expecting, was it higher or lower? That was you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, nevermind. Uh, so they've been doing some modeling and forecasting on the transfer fee, that transfer. A transfer fee is based on real estate sales and transactions. But over the next 30 years to 2052, cumulative, they're anticipating correction.
Okay. And it was 40, I guess. So, so is that, you said 51?
To 2015.
52 is 30 years, 40, 41 divided by 31.3 million a year. And that's just twin views. So to me, I would like to see a very solid forecast broken down for expected transfer fees. Uh, fee and you, because I remember the project that was coming up, uh, that came up a month ago, it was 589,000 dollars. In the payment of the fee and you, and also deferred payments where if a developer instead of paying. City view actually builds affordable housing, which would satisfy the 24 units shown. So to have that broken down better would make it a more fair comparison, like expected revenues and expected needs.
I would, I'd like to mention that the twin views, um, at 1.3 million, we've never collected anywhere near that in one year. Anywhere near that, not even half of it. So, uh, even though your model might say that they're under projecting. We've never done that. And I think we have to really take reality into account when we have that kind of conversation. And then, um.
Well, I was thinking to build on that, where are the sources of revenue? I also think like if you talk about post. That's we have sources of revenue from the 2015 right there. And I also think that we need to make certain, we're not, we're not taking the wish list. With the, uh, under, uh, the modest, uh, assumption of an old plan. So I, to the point of discussing it later, the numbers, and they also might reflect each director's desire. Rather than what's needed for the community. And I think that's important too as well. I mean, everyone's going to advocate for their own area. But what is needed? And then the, again, what has no source of funding? So right now, you know. I can tell you that, you know, like stormwater has no source of funding. Doesn't mean it's even more important, but I just think we need to, to building on Olivier's point. Where are the sources? And then back to twin views, I would like the historical, what has been the historical transfers? Because I've never seen a million. So I'm looking at it.
Well, and then we have the units that, um. Have gone through the planning process or are partway through the planning process, which we might be getting some fees on. That, we aren't seeing that happening. Most of the, um, projects are rental and there's no fee and lieu coming from rental. And so I, I think we're being heavily challenged by those income streams. I don't think they're being as prolific as.
That's a good point on, on the, uh, the rental. I, since the Fersha ordinance is hopefully updated in the. Near the future, that would also be a good projection on, uh, what that would bring here. Add units, rental units or fee. But to have some, some indication of expected.
I think this, this is good information, uh, information requests for further information. And I would add, just to, uh, to follow up on the desire to see, you know, more expected costs that we need for maintenance. Of our parks and recreation assets over the next five to 10 years for consideration. And just point of process for this discussion is that, you know, it's pretty evident to me, even just hearing this, that we want, we're going to need more information. We're going to need more time and we're going to need a lot more time. I need to, for a council to come to a kind of conclusion on this. And I do think it's actually hopeful for me to look at it in whole with the lodger's tax and just to look at comprehensively. What our options of revenue are together, um, also including, you know, potential library district. And so it seems like this is almost like a retreat topic or, you know, this is a, this is like a kind of a longer. Term conversation, I think.
I think an interesting aspect is how the lodger's tax will turn out. Cause that will influence.
That's right.
How this.
So we do, we do have 10 minutes. Do you want to talk a little bit about the thinking of the lodger's tax as well?
Or we could stop at our normal time.
Could I suggest two things? First of all, um, I do think giving us this sense and the, you know, what the minimum max is. I think it's recognizing that you're putting it together based on your, um, staff's priorities and their functions. But as a council, we have to look at it in an integrated manner and say, okay, you know, what achieves. Um, the greatest, addresses the greatest issues that are in our strategic plan. I'm wondering, Melissa, if actually it's a study session either in, um. In early December.
Well, I'm not sure what the timeline is for going to that and when. I know there was, there was one and in the previous discussion that suggested we had three more opportunities to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, but, uh.
So this would be to narrow the scope of views. This is why January 3rd, um, community input between November and December. Survey, recommendations from board, citizens committee, but, um, those are all have the, kind of the question marks on there depending on what. Path council would like to take, provide notice of intent to the county, um, and so the notification would happen in mid-December. The city would have to have an election.
Because the, the lodger's tax has an, uh, required deadline too. So for the lodger's tax, what are the deadlines? And for the sales tax, what are the deadlines? This is for the next, uh, election, but I mean, at what, how many elections do we have an opportunity to have? For the lodger's tax and then for the, uh, for this tax, because.
November of 21, November, no, no, 23, November of 24 and April of 23.
For, for which? There was three, uh, three options.
Right, two Novembers, two Novembers.
No, that was for the, um, 2005.
For the, yeah. Well, is it so?
Before it expired. At least according to the previous slide that you had in the last. I think it was from July, 2022 on the 2005 real. And I had it printed out, but I have got some.
That was if you didn't do, uh, it before it expired.
And then the same for the lodger's tax. So because the, the, the sales tax or the 2005 tax will depend on the lodger's tax results. We're not going to put, uh, transit in both, no, they both pass because then we have double funds. So if the lodger's tax, uh, election takes place or the allocation, that will determine. How the ballot language for this tax should look because we fill the gaps.
Or the other way around. You could, you could never reject the lodger's tax if you didn't want to. But the 2005 tax has to be addressed, has to be. So it actually has a higher priority than the lodger's tax because it, there's no deadline on the lodger's tax.
We get a lot of feedback on the lodger's tax.
Sure, but there's no deadline on it. And there is a deadline on the.
But we have time on the 2005. We have three additional.
So what was the last election possible for the?
December, is it December 2025? I wish I had that.
The tax.
Yeah, that's exactly the one I wanted.
It ends on December 26th.
Correct. See the light blue and the gray and the green? Those are the three other opportunities that you could go to the voters.
November 2023, November 2024 and April 2025. So we have.
So we have, yeah.
And it is on this slide as well too. So then I guess, you know, the counselor boss at this point, it's, um, you know, when will the library be in the budget? How much should be put on the, um, ballot? Um, what would be the results for the November, the over collections? Um, that community outreach process and then the different touchpoints or opportunities to win.
So, well, I'll remind you that the November election and the lodger's tax refund versus refund is a two variable question. And the lodger's tax reallocation is not. That lodger's tax reallocation, uh, there's no refund capability there. So it's a, it's a different, it's a different question. Do I put money in my pocket or do I spend it on something else? Is this question this time? And the reallocation doesn't have that same.
My preference is to clarify amongst council, if we do everything at once, or if we pick one over the other in priority. But I think it probably needs full council.
That's where I was going. I do believe we need the full council, but I actually was going to suggest that, um, I see the point, the merit of your argument. That this one has to be done, but I also think there's strong sentiment, at least I'm hearing about, the, the, uh. A large amount of money that's being collected right now and the importance of housing and other things.
No, I'm not disagreeing with lodger's tax being addressed.
Yeah. So my point is, it might, it might be hoopus to think about one, in which one we might want to put on the ballot in April. Because not having too many things on the ballot, right? So it might make from a strategic, strategic point of view. To think about focusing on one. And maybe that's a discussion when we have the full council here. And it might be a discussion at, I would suggest even within the next. Either the, the next, uh, study session or the December study session. Because if we choose to do one, they have to move.
Aren't we full on the study session?
But I don't know what was on.
Yeah, we're starting 1 o'clock next Wednesday or next, to the council meeting. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, or 1:15, right? Because we've got. And I'm not going to start at noon. When I'm going to.
So, so let us look, if there's anything that I put on that I think can wait, I would keep going back to the organic parks management. Um, I'm happy to move something off if there's a way, because of the timeline, if we're going to pick one, we, and, and think about it.
I, I think that, that, you know, even just what I've seen in this one hour of discussion, I mean, I, I feel like myself, I need more time to. Um, kind of look at this holistically, uh, you know, and look at the big picture for our community. Um, and. And then, and need information back. I don't think this can be rushed, right? I don't want to rush it to try to get it on a ballot. Without a lot of thought and contemplation and absolute confidence that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons, for the right people. Um, and so mine is, my preference is not to try to squeeze it in and manipulate further our study sessions. Which we've done a lot of, but to give this time and think through it. That's fine. Think it holistically.
I agree.
I like your idea of, um, a dedicated retreat to talk about this, the lodger's tax and the sales tax. Um, because I do think that we may not have time, um, to do a thorough vetting of it, as you're pointing out, before our first deadline comes up. And I think we should make that choice being informed and being prepared rather than to let it just go by, let time go by and we just set up. So I, I like the idea of a dedicated.
I just don't know when that would happen and with what council it would happen, depending on where, you know, what we're thinking of is also what I'm thinking of. So we need, I just, I don't know. There's a lot of big issues.
Would be beneficial just to see when, when you have time, how long would it take to get some of the, the questions answered. And then we can determine.
We do have a lot of long list of questions, which will help to get that, it will help to get that information. But I also don't really want to say that this has to be an emergency for you guys. I know that you are, have a lot on your plate. And staff has had tremendous amount on their plate. And so I don't, I want to be weary of just loading on.
I didn't want to put them on the spot for an answer right now. Just let them get back to us. See how, how they're.
Agreed. I agree with that. Get back to us as to what works for a time.
Give back to you for sure.
Yeah. We will resume at 5:30. Thank you. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
I think you guys should be into that question.
Oh, here it found it. I had it.
Yeah, so.
We're, we're usually right in the bracket of that reality.
I just didn't know for, I was up here.
Elektra.
And then I'll be done.
Well, again, I'm, I'm just trying to. It needs to be.